All right, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're here for three items today. Mayor Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee, joined to my left by Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the Committee, to my right, Councilwoman Danny McCray, 2nd District Member of the Committee, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District Member of the Committee, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee, Councilman John Bullock, 9th District. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, staff to the committee. We have Nate Poole on behalf of Council President Nick Mosby, and Sophia G. on behalf of Mayor Brandon Scott. We will jump into 22-0299, Tax Credits, Historic Properties Application Extension. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, members of the committee. As we've talked about in the past, the historic tax credit is one that is one of the most equitable and utilized tax credits throughout Baltimore City. I think most of our districts have a piece of that, and at this point, you know, the idea to extend it for another five years provides the opportunity for folks to take advantage of it, gives a little bit more certainty in the process. We believe this is something that would be a benefit to homeowners and folks who are looking to invest in their properties in Baltimore City. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilman, could not agree more with your comments. Colleagues, if you refer to the bill, line 18 on page 1 indicates the proposed termination date of the program of February 28th, 2028. Is there a motion to amend that to 2024?
So moved.
Motion by Stokes, second by Dorsey. We will do a roll call vote on the amendment. Costello, yes. Stokes?
Yes.
McCray? Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I know that there is a motion in process here. After the last hearing, I had some discussion with Bob Seneme, and I know that he had made a recommendation about an 18-month extension. The motion on the floor is to change this for one year, to extend this?
One year, instead of five years or 18 months, correct?
I'll just go along. Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes.
Thank you. As part of a larger effort here, we've been talking about doing a review of our tax credit portfolio. The mayor announced a committee in September of 2021. It is now February of 2023. If my math is correct, that committee was announced 16 months ago. So we're only going to be moving forward with a one-year extension for now, with the understanding that we need to revisit that effort and move forward expeditiously. So Bob, if you could please bring that back to senior staff and the mayor. I'll be reaching out to Deputy Mayor today to talk about that as well. Thank you. Councilman Dorsey, you were a yes vote on the?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Colleagues, is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended?
So moved.
Motion by Dorsey, second by Stokes. Costello is a yes, Burnett is absent. Dorsey?
Yes.
McCray? Middleton? Schleifer?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
This bill passes with six yays and one absence. Bill moves to second reader at the next meeting of the City Council. Next up, Legislative Oversight, 21-0003, Budget Briefing Bureau of Budget and Management Research. Larson, Mr. Seneme, floor is yours.
Can we plug, we have a presentation, where can we plug that?
We're having a plethora of technical challenges today.
Okay.
I believe we provided handouts, so.
Handouts are, we will be working off of handouts today.
Okay.
Can you get us, we were expecting to look at the screen.
Sure.
Just two, I think. You got?
Anybody else?
Marguerite?
Thanks.
If you run out, I can give mine back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Bob Seneme, representing Department of Finance. And we had actually two topics today. We're going to be going over fiscal '22 closeout numbers. So that's the year that ended 2022 on June 30th. And then I'm going to turn it over to Laura, and she's going to walk you through the fiscal '23 first quarter projection. So we're going to hit both because we haven't done the the closeout numbers yet, and haven't briefed the council on that yet. So if you look to page 3, you can see our final numbers for fiscal '22. These are unaudited, I should say. Our financial report is being put together and is due soon, but these are still unaudited numbers at this point. You can see we were showing a total surplus of $113.9 million in the general fund. That was made up of a $186.8 million revenue surplus and a $72.9 million expenditure deficit. And the reason you're seeing a large deficit on the expenditure side and a big surplus on the revenue side is partly because we're still in this process of spending money where we're getting reimbursed from FEMA. That's one of the reasons. And we'll talk more about the revenue surplus in a moment. So again, a good fiscal year for us, one of the best we've had in many years. And, you know, in general, there was a pretty strong rebound of the economy in fiscal '22, and we benefited from that. So if you turn to slide 4, you can see on the revenue assumption, there's two bullets. One says what we assumed in the budget, and the next one says what we actually experienced in fiscal '22. So in fiscal '22, we had assumed that our local economic recovery would lag a little bit behind, you know, national and global trends. That did not happen. We saw a rapid economic recovery across a lot of sectors in '22. We also had expected to see strong activity in the transfer and recreation market. What we actually saw was a record-breaking year of receipts in transfer and recreation revenues, which I'll show you in a moment. We expected continued growth in income tax. We pretty much saw that, our income tax was very strong again in '22. And then we'd also assumed in the budget that there would be a continual lag on tourism-related revenues, mainly hotel tax and parking. And we were, I would say pleasantly surprised that we did start to see at least a gradual recovery of those sources in fiscal '22. We're still not even near pre-COVID levels there, but we did see some recovery. Excuse me, the next slide, slide 5 in the presentation is a chart, is a graph that shows the transfer and recreation receipts historically. So this is 20-plus years of receipts and transfer and recreation. And as you can see on the far right, our level of receipts in fiscal '22 was $176.4 million. That's about 60 million higher than even our previous high over the past 20-plus years. So I just wanted to show you guys this chart because, just to kind of frame for folks how incredible this year was on that front. Extraordinary year of activity in the housing market, a lot of activity, a lot of transaction, higher prices. All that led to a significant surplus in transfer and recreation. We don't expect that to continue forever. We're probably going to see a little bit of spillover that into '23, which you'll see momentarily. But that's a one-time surplus, that we can't expect that to be repeated. On slide 6, the COVID impact on parking revenues. So like I just said, we saw in '22 some recovery of parking revenues, but we're just not even close to being back to our pre-COVID level. So those first five bars are what we would consider pre-COVID, fiscal '16, '17, '18, '19, and then fiscal '20 for most of the year before COVID hit. And you can see we were averaging somewhere around 7 million plus per month of parking revenues, all sources. And then you can see post-COVID, we got back to $5.3 million per month in fiscal '22. But again, we're still well short of what we were bringing in pre-COVID. I think at this point, it's fair to say there's probably some permanent loss of parking revenue when you have, you know, work-from-home arrangements, people not, you know, entering into garages, especially in the downtown area. I don't think we'll ever recover some of those lost revenues, but at least we're starting to see some rebound, that people are back out and going about their business, and we're seeing some more activity there. A next slide, same on hotel tax. You can see that pre-COVID, again, that fiscal '16 through fiscal '20 period, pre-COVID, you know, we were averaging nearly $3 million a month of hotel tax revenue. And since then, we're back to $2 million a month of hotel tax revenue. You can see the occupancy, the orange line on the graph, you can see the occupancy is higher. So people are staying in city hotels, but hotels have lowered their prices to try to lure people back in. So even as the occupancy has grown, has rebounded, we still have lower prices, which means our revenues are still a bit artificially low at this point. And then finally, just on the revenue side, on slide 8, this is just a graph showing all of the the revenue sources that were either above or below budget by more than a million. I'll focus on some of the big ones, just to remind you what's going on. So starting on the far right, income taxes, $71.4 million above budget for '22. There's two reasons for that. One is that we, going into '22, fiscal '22, we knew that the state had passed a law which was exempting unemployment insurance from tax. And so we were, based on a fiscal note from the Department of Legislative Services, we were expecting to see a pretty large impact on our income tax, and that just did not pan out. We did not see that play out. So we had built our forecast even lower by over $20 million, expecting there to be this impact from a law that was passed at the state level, and we didn't see that play out. And then on top of that, the activity again in fiscal '22 was really extraordinary. I mean, very strong national economy, and we still saw that play out in Maryland as well. The next two bars are a combination of transfer and recreation taxes. So again, you know, it's a phenomenal year on that front because of all the activity in the housing market. And then that next one, personal property taxes, is more of a timing issue. We were late issuing bills at the end of fiscal '21, and so some of the receipts actually came in for personal property in fiscal '22. Just touching on the big ones on the left-hand side of the graph as well. So we're showing a deficit in prior year fund balance. Really what that means is that we sent, because we had such a strong year in transfer and recreation, we sent in fiscal '22 over $30 million back to the capital budget, which was accounted for in the '23 capital budget. So the capital budget in '23 was larger because we actually sent some money over from '22 to allow us to do more on the capital front, knowing that those were one-time receipts. And then the decline on the lower property tax, which came in under budget by 14.6 million. Most of that is related to commercial appeals, commercial properties especially that were harmed by COVID. We're very aggressive about going after appeals with ESTAT, and we did see some lower commercial property values because of those appeals in fiscal '22. On the closeout actions on slide 9, so there's two things that we are, we have available to us at the end of the fiscal year in finance. One is that we can allow agencies to carry money forward in, from fiscal '22 into fiscal '23. And that's only allowed if the agency has unspent appropriation and the funds are to be used for the original purpose that they were intended. And so we have already paid, we already went to the board. There's about $9.6 million of funds that was carried forward from fiscal '22 to '23. That requires Board of Estimates approval only, it doesn't go to the council, and the board did approve that in December. The budget also includes a $1 million contingency fund that we're able to use for unplanned expenses. And we did do a draw on the contingency fund of $563,000 for the sheriff's office. That also only has to go to the Board of Estimates. So those two things were taken care of by the board in December. And the sheriff was the sheriff deployment, they were pulled into a lot of additional deployments on overtime to assist with a lot of issues, either public safety or related issues during fiscal '22. In terms of our supplementals to close out the fiscal '22 budget, so on slide 10, just kind of a recap of the law. So basically, per the city charter, we are required to have the general fund balanced as a whole, and each individual agency must end in balance. And as I showed you on the first slide, we had some overplanned overspending in some agencies, and some additional revenue that we knew we were getting from FEMA reimbursement. And so that is what is covering the first four supplemental. So there's nine total, four of them are pandemic-related, I would call, that are direct COVID spending. And then there's another four that are overspending in other agencies. I would say some of it was planned, and some of it was COVID-related, but it wasn't direct spending on the pandemic. And I'll walk you through those in a moment. Those require both board approval and council approval. So those have already passed the board in December, and they're with the council now. And then the transfers at the bottom, we also send actions to the Board of Estimates that just balances issues within an agency. Those are not required to go to the council, they just need to go to the board. So there was a variety of transfers between services, and I've listed some of the agencies there. And again, those are just areas where an agency spent a little bit more on one service as opposed to another service. They're not required to go to the council, the board has already passed those items. In terms of the COVID-related supplementals that we're asking for, and again, I just want to be clear that the sum of all these actions does not change the total surplus of 113-point million. This is just using some of the revenue surplus to balance out agencies that overspend. So it does not change the overall net surplus in the general fund. This is again, just using revenue surplus to make sure that we have all of our agencies in balance at the end of the year. And I'll walk you through these items. So the first one was the Health Department. The continuing homeless shelter costs are being charged to Health. There's an activity in Health called COVID-19, so a lot of our direct spending on COVID is hitting the Health Department. So this is any COVID-related response from the Health Department, plus homeless sheltering costs are hitting there. A total of $33.8 million. Again, all of that we expect to be, most of that we expect to be reimbursed through FEMA. Planning Department was managing feeding programs this year. The food distribution costs and feeding programs all hit the Planning Department budget, total of 14 million. And again, most of that reimbursable by FEMA. General Services had facilities costs related to the pandemic. So this is things like security and screenings for employees when they came into the building to make sure we test for folks, and temperature checks for folks as they came in the building, $10.5 million. Again, most of that will be reimbursable, we believe, by FEMA. And then the final one that's also directly COVID-related is the Convention Center Hotel. So if folks remember, we are required to pay up to $7 million to pay debt service to continue to meet the debt service requirements on the Convention Center Hotel, which was financed by the city about two decades ago. We had to use $5.4 million of general fund to make that payment. Again, the cap for the city is $7 million, so it can't exceed $7 million per the bond indenture. Slide 12, there are four other supplementals that I would say are not really COVID-related, and wanted to explain these. These were, some of these were planned, some of these we were okay with the agency spending more because we knew we had a revenue surplus to cover this. The first one is for finance, for $1.9 million. We had spent some money on getting through the accounts payable backlog, and also some workday-related transition expenses. For transportation, $4.4 million for snow removal and street safety costs. We had a lot of activations last year from the Department of Transportation. Not a ton of precipitation, but a lot of activations for either rain or sleet-type events. Public Works, $2.8 million. This is for additional disposal costs, employee stipends that we gave during COVID-19, and also contracts for private staffing support. So we were using contractors to cover some routes. And then finally, miscellaneous general, there's an adjustment that we had to make in that account for fiscal '22. Reason for that is because we learned through our audit in '21 that there were some leave balances that were accounted for improperly in '21, and we had to take a charge for that on our books in fiscal '22. So those are the, what I would just call the closeout supplementals, just what we need to basically meet the terms of the law, the charter requirements, to close imbalance among all agencies and as a whole. I can tell you that we also, with that surplus, we're doing two things. We're planning to do two things with that large surplus of over $100 million. One is we've already submitted a package of $55 million worth of spending items that has come to the council. And my understanding is that some of those are on their way or will be announced shortly. So we, as a team, when we had that large surplus, we sat down and said, hey, what are the big one-time items that we need to take care of? Most of them are either economic development or facilities-related, where we're really struggling. And those were all submitted to the council as a use of some of that surplus for fiscal '22. The other thing we did was we essentially decided to park some of the money in the meantime for two things, and they're listed on slide 13, there are two big legal liabilities that we're facing heading into '23. One of them is police legacy cases. So even though we've settled a lot of the GTTF claims that have come forward, we're still getting historical claims from decades ago where citizens are claiming that they were imprisoned wrongfully and that the city was at fault. You know, each of those cases, we look at on the merits, on the merits of those cases individually, but we have had to set aside some money for the potential risk there. If those cases go to federal court, you know, the juries can award tens of millions of dollars for those cases, so the city might be on the hook for some of those cases. And we have set some of the surplus aside to protect against that possibility. Just for your reference, the Law Department, per a bill, I believe, that's passed a few years by the council, has to post all of those potential claims, or all those claims or outstanding lawsuits against the city. So if you're interested in what those are, there's dozens of them, you can see those, those are publicly available. And again, most of those haven't been resolved yet, but we do think the risk is high in '23. And then the second one is we still have this ADA, Merkins with Disabilities Act class action suit against the city. It's mostly related to curbs and sidewalks that the plaintiffs are claiming that the city has not kept pace. DOT put a report out that said it would cost over $600 million to repair and to fix all of those issues. I really hope we don't have to pay that amount because we obviously can't pay it, but we are going to have to make some kind of good faith effort to try to correct and remediate those issues. So to catch up over a longer period of time could be anywhere from 10 to 25 million dollars a year. So, you know, we wanted to set some of the surplus aside and not spend all of it because these, both of these issues could become, you know, front and center in fiscal '23 at some point. So finally, just to summarize on the last slide, slide 14, this was a good year. It was, we saw a strong rebound from the lows of fiscal '21. We had growing income tax, and we had a record year of transfer and recreation activity. We saw a modest rebound of our tourism-related revenues, but that's still short of pre-COVID levels. We're continuing to use the FEMA reimbursement for homeless services, sheltering, feeding programs, other COVID responses. I should let you know that that, we expect the emergency declaration to end, I believe in May, is what the president just announced. That means that the programs where we were getting either 100% reimbursement through last July or 90% reimbursement since that point is going to end completely sometime in fiscal '23. So this will be the last year, '23 will be the last year you'll see expenses that are being reimbursed by FEMA. That program is shut off in May, which means we'll have some choices to make about whether we continue those programs or shift them to other funding sources. And then, as I mentioned, the administration is looking at options for '22 surplus. We have submitted supplementals, one-time spending actions to use some of that surplus. And then also, as I mentioned, we're choosing to hold on to some of the money because we do have some immediate, we think, liabilities. And again, those were all passed by the Board of Estimates, and that legislation is currently moving through the council process. So I can pause here to take any questions on fiscal '22 before we turn it over to Laura for '23 projection at this point.
Mr. Seneme, it's pleasantly surprising to hear you sound optimistic. Colleagues, any questions?
Just wait a couple of days. I'm serious.
Colleagues?
Just, I guess, a clarification question. The page, hi, how are you?
Good.
The page that has the proposed supplementals, COVID-related expenditures, I think it's 12, 11.
Yep.
The section that says, the line that says for continuing homeless shelter costs. Could you kind of give Claire, because I know we have a homeless office. So why is the Health Department still connected that way financially?
Yeah, I can explain that. So in the early stages of COVID, in order to track all of the direct COVID-related expenses, a lot of which at the beginning were being coordinated by Health, but not all of them, we set up a separate account just in the Health Department to track most, if not, it wasn't everything, but most of those costs. And so what happened was, we did in the early stages start charging the homeless shelter cost against Health because the reason we took that action, it was a health-related reason. We wanted to stop the spread of COVID among that population, which is more risky in that congregate-type setting. We thought about moving that, like, starting to charge that to homeless services, but for consistency, we just said, let's continue to charge it to Health. So I understand that not all of those costs are like Health Department themselves costs, but we felt that that's all the health-related response, and we just left it there. And again, that will be done, fiscal '23 will be the last year that we'll see some of those charges, we would think, hitting that account, but that was why it evolved that way.
Okay.
It's kind of more of a counting thing, that it just, that was the easiest place. We wanted to put it in one spot so that we could kind of have line of sight of everything we were spending on COVID response, essentially.
And then my last question, right on that same page for General Services, and just, I'm hoping that you're kind of considering, you know, we get a lot of school buildings that are surplus to the city, and they are, they're being a burden by being vandalized an awful lot. And just trying to see if you can consider, get, if they, that office can get cameras and start really cracking down and catching these people. And just an example, Greenspring, that has been, you know, vacant for a long time. It was a temporary shelter for over a year and a half. Some of those, by the way, some of those people, some of the homeless folks have gotten back in there. And not saying that they're doing the vandalism, but it's just several pieces that are really destroying buildings in general that we are trying to sell.
Yeah, and I know the city's been moving as quickly as possible to try to sell some of those buildings, which I know we did a bunch of them, or are planning to do a bunch of them currently. The cost to secure those buildings is in General Services, so we do have the expense in the operating budget. And again, we don't want to spend any more than we have to on that. I hadn't thought really about the camera idea. We can definitely discuss that with General Services and see if that would help because they are having to go and make repairs and have security to kind of protect the buildings to make sure. But I don't know if the cameras, they do have cameras, but that's a good idea. I think we should check with them to see if it's possible.
Yes, because that building has been, they, you know, they secure the doors, and I'm sure this happens to other schools. They bolt those doors down, secure them, but they get back in there. And I'm feeling it is some, you know, it's a group that is doing this. And so I really think it's time to try to consider investing in some cameras to really crack down on what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Seneme, can I get the revenues for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, please?
Yes, I don't have them in front of me since they're not general fund, but we can, we can send them over.
Yeah, just how the closeout ended up being for fiscal '22. Yeah, thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, let's jump into the next section.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Laura for '23.
Good morning, everyone. This is my first opportunity to present to the committee, so very excited to work with you all on matters around building and implementing the budget. So today, we're going to talk about what we're seeing in terms of our analysis from the first quarter projections for fiscal '22. the first quarter projections for fiscal '23. So again, the, the first quarter would pick up data that, for revenue and expenditures from July through September. We have completed, or are in the process of completing our second quarter projections, so when we come back to talk with, about those numbers with you all, we may see some of these trends have shifted a little bit. But if we flip to slide 17, we can see sort of from a high level where we are at as of the end of September this fall. So we continue to see strength on our revenue numbers. Our revenues are projecting a surplus of just over $27 million. On the expenditure side, we are projecting a bit of a deficit, again, driven by those COVID-related expenditures that we continue to see and will continue to see as we go into, up until that deadline in, in May. A couple of things to note here, that really what we're seeing on the revenue side again is that we are seeing especially the residual strength of the real estate market that carried through summer of 2022, that really helped out in, in the first quarter numbers. But as you'll see in a couple of minutes, we have started to see those trends reverse just as, as interest rates have increased and changed the dynamics in the real estate market. So shifting ahead to slide 19, we'll talk first about what we're seeing on the revenue side and then, and then shift to the expenditure side. So that, that $27.4 million represents about a 1.3% surplus in terms of the total general fund revenue. As I mentioned, transfer and recrodation, we are seeing the lingering positive benefit there. We also continue to see strength in the city's income tax revenue stream, and then as interest rates have increased, that has actually helped in terms of our investment earnings for the city's general fund, and that's a revenue source that had, had really dropped off during the pandemic. Some of the areas that we are concerned about sort of are carrying through from some of the trends that Bob was discussing regarding fiscal '22. So first, in the area of the, the personal property tax, as Bob mentioned, we, we had some billing issues there regarding getting those bills out to folks, which was attributed to some printing issues, and so that did delay some revenue. One of the, the things that we're monitoring closely is what we are experiencing regarding the highway user revenue and the projected increase that we were expecting as a result of the change in state legislation, so we'll talk a little bit more about what's happening there in a couple of minutes. And then finally, as, as revenues for the, for parking are continuing to sort of stabilize at this, like, post-pandemic level, we do see that there is a need to really understand the expenditures there and really kind of bring the expenditures of some of those operations in line with these new, with the new revenue levels that we're experiencing. So on slide 20, you can see what all these numbers look like, broken out by categories. Again, the, the grouping of what we call local taxes, that represents the largest share of the revenue, and so we'll talk about a lot of the variations in that category in a couple of moments. Slide 21 is just giving us a summary based off the first quarter of where we're seeing projected surpluses and deficits in, in some of these key revenue areas. Just like in fiscal '22, the biggest surplus that we are seeing is, is again, in transfer and recrodation tax, and, and we'll talk more about those trends in a minute. And again, and some of the areas that, that we are worried about in terms of what we're seeing through the first quarter, state highway user revenue is, is one area, and then the, the cost of providing the high-performance market rate tax credit, which we'll talk about again in a couple of minutes. So on slide 22, we've broken down just the local tax portion of what we're seeing in the city's budget. So again, these local taxes represent about 77% of the city's general fund revenue. In total, this portion of the city's budget is projected to have a $30.5 million surplus in '23. Again, sort of similar trends, strength in, in transfer and recrodation and the income tax. We are seeing that, that surplus is slightly offset by a projected deficit related to some local miscellaneous taxes that are collected, and again, that, that ties back to the personal property bill issue that I just mentioned. So if we slip, if we flip ahead to, I'm losing my number in here, to slide 22, we can talk specifically about what we're seeing on, in property taxes. So the, the fiscal '23 budget assumed $943 million from property taxes, and as of the first quarter, we're projecting $939 million in revenue, so about a $3.3 million deficit. What we saw in the assessments that kicked in for '23 was that there was a net increase of value of about $73.5 million. Within that, we saw that there was a slightly smaller number of properties that saw their value increase compared to properties that saw their, their assessment values decrease. We are seeing modest, a modest drop-off in the collection rate for property taxes. That's in, that's down from about 98% to 97.5%, which is slightly, which is contributing a little bit to what we're seeing in the budget variation. The, the other piece that we are, that's factored into this projection is the, is the impact of the homestead tax credit in terms of individual property tax bills. One thing that I do just want to give you a heads-up when we come back and talk second quarter numbers, this is one where we have seen the trends switch in, from the first to second quarter, so we, we will see a bigger deficit when I come back and talk about the second quarter numbers. That is attributed to a data issue that was identified in the, in the property tax roll file, where we had duplicate properties. So because there was that data issue, we, we are seeing that the, the budget assumptions are slightly higher, and we, we will need to recalibrate based off of the correction to data that's been identified. If we flip ahead to the, to slide 24, this is the transfer and recrodation taxes. So the, the total budget for these sources in '23 is $90.1 million, and we are projecting $113.6 million for this year, so that would result in about a $23.5 million surplus. As I mentioned, a lot of the strength here, again, is, is related to what we were continuing to see in the real estate market over the summer. We are seeing that refinancing, refinancing transactions are down by about 21%, and mortgage originations are down by 4%. And so as, as those trends continue to decline or, or stable out at these lower levels, we will start to see revenue from transfer and recrodation tax sort of go back to really more of like a pre-COVID normal year. One thing also to note that's sort of helping to bolster the numbers here is that there was, just because of volume, there were some fiscal '22 transactions that wound up being recorded in fiscal '23, and so that, we are continuing, that's just another way in which we're continuing to see that lingering strength as we go into fiscal '23. If we flip ahead to slide 25, this is, is talking about income taxes. So in the, in the '23 budget, we have assumed just under $419 million from income tax receipts, but we're projecting about, just shy of $435 million, so a $16.5 million surplus. One thing to note is that when we did, due to the timing of when we did the first quarter projections, we had not actually received a dispersment from the state yet. And so in these numbers that we were using here were based off of prior-year trends in terms of what we would see in those dispersments. And so we have seen a little bit of variation once we began to receive revenue from the state in November, and so this is another area where we may see some changes when we come back at second quarter. When we look at what we're projecting around income tax for the rest of the year, we are assuming about a 0.2% decline in terms of what's going to happen to these numbers. One thing that's important to keep in context with the income tax, because of how it's structured in terms of its appointment to the state and then gets dispersed back to the local jurisdictions, that 0.2% reduction is not really a reflection of our labor market or what we're seeing in terms of jobs numbers in the city. It's more so a, a relationship between how dollars are being passed from the city to the state in terms of all of the reconciliation that happens between them collecting the dollars and passing them on to us. The other thing that is sort of an area of, of strength in the, in the space of income taxes, the fiduciary returns, so those are, that's, those are income taxes that people pay on non-employment-based incomes, so like trust funds, things like that. And we are seeing that the returns from, from that type of income are up about just under $2 million compared to what we budgeted. Part of that could also be attributed to the higher interest rates and higher returns that folks are seeing, seeing on those types of income streams. Flipping ahead now to slide 26, to investment earnings. So this is the investment returns that the, the city receives on, on the cash that we hold. So in the budget, we, for '23, we had assumed $8.5 million, but we're projecting actual receipts of $22.5 million. So this is a revenue stream that during COVID and the low interest rates that we were experiencing, it had gone down essentially to zero. And so we're really seeing this, this number come back and come back strong with the higher interest rates. The other thing that's helping us here is that with the city's ARPA allocation, we, we hold the cash, all of the cash from the, our ARPA award as part of our, as part of the city's overall portfolio, and because we have sort of a higher balance than what we would normally have without ARPA, that's also helping to contribute to higher investment returns as well. And this is something that's having a benefit to the general fund, but it's also having a benefit to some of our enterprise funds as well in terms of the returns that they're seeing just from their cash on hand. So switching gears now to a couple of deficits that we're monitoring on slide 27, this is state highway user revenue. This, in '23, we had budgeted just shy of $170 million from state highway user revenue. We are projecting about $160 million in fiscal '23, so that's going to give us a deficit of just shy of, of $10 million. Again, this is, '23 represents the first year of our step up in terms of the HUR allocation that the city's receiving as a result of new legislation in Annapolis. One of the things that we're seeing with highway user revenue, though, is that some of the inputs into the, the formula that drives the allocation that folks receive, those are, those are trending lower than in previous fiscal years. So we're seeing less activity around folks licensing and registering cars, gas tax, revenue from the gas taxes down by about 7.5% compared to the same period in, in '22. This, this is something that we're closely monitoring. We're very reliant, just like the income tax, we're really reliant on partners from the state to understand what's happening with the data that's driving our allocation. So we've been working very closely with them to understand sort of what trends they're seeing and, and in terms of are these things moving. This is another area where we have seen a little bit of improvement as we've gotten more data and information, so we'll have some new numbers for you when we're back for second quarter. And then finally, the, the last revenue highlight to mention for, is on slide 28, and this is associated with the High Performance Market Rate Tax Credit Program. So in the general fund revenues, we anticipate the cost of administering the city's tax credit programs, and so for this particular program, based off of the activity that we're seeing, the cost of administering this program in '23 is going to be about $6 million higher than what was assumed in the budget. A part of that is related to the, the change in legislation that drove the eligibility for this credit in terms of reducing the number of required units from 60 to 15. That resulted in a higher number of, of projects that would qualify for this credit to be in the pipeline, and not all of those pipeline projects were factored into the, the project, the '23 budget projections. And so this was something that we're just seeing the impacts of and, and will adjust as we set these numbers for '24. So now just to shift gears quickly to talk about expenditures, we will flip ahead to slide number 30. Just in, in terms of agencies where we are projecting some deficits, the first is for the fire department. This is, this is a continuation of a trend that we've seen in recent years, but we are projecting that they'll have about a $17.4 million deficit. What's happening in the, the fire department is that they are carrying a high number of vacancies, and so what's happening in order to meet their daily minimum staffing requirements is they're filling those shifts with overtime shifts. And the cost of the overtime to fill the shifts is exceeding any level of savings that we're realizing from having the vacant positions. And so one of the things that we're working very closely with the fire department on is to really understand how we can get ahead of their recruitment efforts so that we can see some of these positions be filled and, and become less reliant on overtime, both for fire suppression, fire suppression shifts as well as EMS. And then on the Health Department, we're projecting just under a $23 million deficit. Again, this is, this is the FEMA-related expenditures that we do anticipate to receive that 90% match back from FEMA. Again, what, we are looking at those programs that are still receiving FEMA, FEMA reimbursement and trying to understand what's going to happen with those programs after the FEMA dollars expire in May. The biggest cost of, of this program are the, the lease costs that we're incurring for the two hotels that we're operating as, as homeless shelters. But we do, we do have some costs associated with the Health Department's continued support of vaccination clinics and then other just related Health Department eligible expenses. And then finally, the equity and, and equity and civil rights, the first quarter projection assumed a $2.3 million deficit. This is related to costs associated with the Police Accountability Board. Now, again, this is a number that has, has changed since first quarter, so as, as many of you know, the, the Police Accountability Board was created over, over the summer. The, the process through the council was, was playing out as the '23 budget was being completed, and so there were no dollars for the Police Accountability Board included in the '23 budget. We had, we said that a supplemental, we would come back with a supplemental to, to fund that based off the final model for that program. So there is a supplemental that's currently working its way through the council process that will fund the Police Accountability Board based off of their staffing level. Again, because this is getting up and off the board maybe a little bit later in the fiscal year than we had originally thought, I, I don't believe that we'll be in a situation where they'll spend the full $2 million. So in summary, in terms of, of where we are for fiscal '23, continue, continuing to be in, in a place of relative strength, although we are projecting a, a small deficit coming out of the first quarter, I, I do think we were being, I do think that's a conservative approach just based off of the data that we had available, that we were able to analyze at that point, and some of these numbers are coming much more into focus as we go through the second quarter. I, I do think our, our revenues continue to look strong, but where, where we've had exceptional strength in the past, that's coming back to a more normal level, and our general fund revenues are kind of stabilizing out at, at what we would expect would be more of an ongoing trend. One of the things that we continue to monitor very closely are the high number of vacancies that our city agencies are carrying, and so we've really been focusing on working with those agencies to understand what do we need to do in order to get critical positions into the, the recruitment and hiring pipeline? And if we, and where we do have issues with hard-to-fill positions, what can we do in terms of the overall resources that are available for staffing costs in order to, to meet those needs to provide services? So with that, you can take any questions that you all might have regarding fiscal '23 first quarter.
Thank you. Colleagues? Councilwoman McCray?
Director Lawson, you spoke briefly about vacancies that we have throughout our agency. The FY adopted budget. The FY adopted budget also pointed within, it said the city was also likely to see growing pressure on wages. If inflationary trends continued, even just an additional 1% increase may cost us an additional $10 million. I want to know at this time, how has inflation impacted our wages as well as what has been the additional cost on the city so far for this fiscal year?
Yeah, so, I mean, I will say that we're continuing to see higher vacancy trends than what we would like to see in a normal period. So we have hovered between 15% to 20% throughout fiscal '23, which is, we had started to see those numbers back in fiscal '22. I know our partners in HR and the Labor Commissioner's Office continue to work on their wage studies to identify where we can do more around compensation. We've also been working in a very targeted way with agencies to identify where we have opportunities to take positions that they're not able to fill because of wage issues and look at how we can use savings from those positions to upgrade salaries for specific groups of employees, kind of on an agency-by-agency basis. I will say, as we go into fiscal '24, this is again something that we monitor closely so that we can get to a point where we have a more, what I would say would be more of an ongoing, sustainable solution that is across the board and maybe not agency-specific.
Do you know by chance, any of the, you said, obviously, DHL would be continuing to work on wage studies throughout. Is there an estimate of the most recent study or do you guys have that information with the finance?
I don't have all of those specific details offhand. We can get an update of what studies are underway and kind of where they are. I can say that we, you know, my team has been working closely with HR in terms of looking at what other sort of solutions we have for groups of classifications where we have very high vacancy rates to look at sort of, you know, in addition to getting wages higher, like what are some short-term solutions we can do to provide relief to employees now? And so I do think we're getting very close to having some solutions there that we can get implemented hopefully as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Colleagues? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ready to move to same legislative oversight hearing, 21-0003, Baltimore City Public Schools.
My name is Chris Dougherty. I'm the chief of the finance office at City Schools. Oh, we do have my presentation up there. Thank you. Today I'll be talking about, like Mr. Seneme, the FY '22 closeout report in summary fashion. Our financial statements have been audited. Mr. Seneme has mentioned that theirs had not yet, but ours have been. We have a shorter amount of time that we're legally required to have that done, and we have had these audited by external auditors. And once again, we did receive what's called an unqualified opinion or a clean audit. So with that, I'll jump in. The purpose of this presentation, as you know, is to satisfy Council Bill 17-004R for the purposes of transparency. Next slide, please. And yes, so first, we're looking at our general fund revenue by source. Everything is in thousands of dollars, as you would expect. And this look takes a look at our final FY '22 budgeted numbers and our actual amounts. The city's revenue situation is a lot more complex than ours. We have two major funders, the state of Maryland and the city of Baltimore, who together contribute 96% of our revenues. And there's also, by contrast with some of the city's revenue streams, once the amounts are set for the state and for the city, there's a lot less movement than there are for some of the city's revenue streams. That doesn't say they don't move at all. If you see on our single biggest funder, the state of Maryland, the final budget was $857 million, and our actual received amount was $860 million and change. That is a function of timing. Like with the city, of course, when we start our budget development process, it is a multi-month, multi actor process, and we use preliminary state aid numbers that come from the state. And they take pains to say that those are preliminary. Sometimes they change and sometimes they don't. But in this case of FY '22, what we went to press with for the state of Maryland turned out to be off a bit. You see, the variance is less than a percent, but when the numbers are that large, the absolute numbers are worth pointing out. The city of Baltimore, our second major funder at 23%, and FY '22 came in right on the penny, which we very much appreciate for planning purposes and auditing purposes. The next line you'll see is federal sources. Federal sources, most of what makes up our federal sources is E-Rate. E-Rate is an excellent federal program whereby schools and libraries get highly subsidized internet connectivity rates. There is, of course, a process to go through, and so we estimate how much, we front pay for the connectivity services, and then we go through a process with the FCC and get reimbursed, not for the whole amount, but for a significant amount. And that can also, the timing of those things can straddle different years. So our final budgeted number was a bit lower than what our actual amount was in our favor. And that's also where we have our Army, Navy, and Air Force ROTC programs. That's part of federal sources as well. Investment earnings, as the name suggests, we budgeted $1 million and got just under $1.1 million. Those, like Ms. Larson said, for the city, when we have cash on hand, we invest it in extraordinarily conservative instruments like money markets and short-term T-bills. The city, of course, does it as well and quite well. We have more lumpiness from the state with regard to our incoming revenues than with the city. The city pays us every two weeks, and so therefore it's kind of a as-needed, and the city can make investments with their money. The state, by contrast, sends us six chunks of payment throughout a year, every two months. And as you can imagine, those funds come in, we don't need them all right away. We put them in various interest-bearing accounts. So that's what explains the bit of difference there. Other revenue is kind of a rather large catch-all that has to do with both Maryland Stadium Authority revenues, when folks pass away and test it, and after their process, their issues go through the court, then sometimes the recipient of last resort is the city schools, as well as we have folks who come to our magnet schools from out of district, pay non-resident tuition, Baltimore School for the Arts being a good example, and those all flow into other revenue. It's not a very explanatory title. That's why I take pains to give a little bit of color on what those are. GASB hit us pretty hard, or I should say, certain elements of GASB changes manifested in FY '22, as the city council knows. GASB 84, which changed how certain fiduciary activities are recorded and reported, made us have an actual amount of $2.1 million that has to do with school activity funds and how those school activity funds are treated. That wasn't part of our original budget. Similarly, GASB 87 reared its head in earnest in FY '22. That has to do with how we characterize leases. And we saw both a unbudgeted revenue activity of $463,000 relating to proper GASB 87 treatment. And there's also an accompanying expenditure on the next page. And all in all, we budgeted, our final FY '22 budget was $1.174 billion, and we came in with actuals at $1.163 billion, a delta of about $10 million or less than 1% all things considered. The next page, predictably, slide number five, takes a look at the expenditure side. And we also do expenditure not by source but by object. That was a request a few years ago from the city council. Objects are typically more meaningful than sources. You can see, per your request, the object categories are pretty straightforward. Salary and wages, we came in, I think reasonably close to budget. Fringe, again, was acceptably close to budget. Contractual services and transfers, we were over a bit. And the function there, I think, is again, is both timing and also any activity that comes in from a previous period with contractual services or transfers, that doesn't really apply for salary and wages or fringe, but it does apply sometimes with contractual services. So we were a little higher there than we budgeted. I think most of these are pretty straightforward, again, because the object descriptions are more helpful. You see the expenditure manifestation, both of the GASB 84 recording and the GASB 87 recording. And all in all, the summary of our expenditures is that, of course, when we budgeted our expenditures, our revenues and expenditures have to and do match, so they're the 1.174 number. And our actuals came in at 1.139, a delta of $34 million or just under 3%. And if you look at the final page, which summarizes from the preceding pages of both final budget, both by revenue and expense, and then actual amount, both by revenue expense, you see operating results of $24 million and a bit, which is about 2% or 2.0% of the overall budget. And what we do there is we take that amount and we assign it to various categories, one to make everything balanced, and two, of course, to put remaining funds to good uses. And what these were reserved for was a variety of things determined by senior leadership to be necessary activities. As the names indicate, we have athletic fields replacement upgrade of a little over $1.5 million. We have a small pilot program that we'll be implementing for weapons detection system at four high schools. Thurgood Marshall Swing Space, that may not be as self-explanatory, that is going to be where we house City College scholars for the two- to three-year period when City College is being completely renovated and revamped. Proud father of three City College Knights, that's a big news for us. But a significant amount of money needs to go into Thurgood Marshall Swing Space to make it ready for about 1,300 or so City College scholars for the period of construction. The Mount Washington Portable, if the name isn't, doesn't, those are portable housing or portable building, they're actually quite nice. One is needed at Mount Washington and another for Marie Gi Faring. The one at Marie Gi Faring is in fact about two and a little bit more times bigger, so they're the same manufacturer, the same idea, but one is considerably bigger, and that's for overcrowding issues, and that's how we assigned those funds. And that is our FY '22 at summary. And again, we were happy to get a clean audit, and we're happy to come and talk to you about FY '22.
Thank you. Colleagues? Councilwoman McCray.
Chief Dougherty, we're seeing an uptick in youth violence, public safety concerns in and around our public schools. As you mentioned, Thurgood Marshall Swing Space and bringing high school students, I'm a poly grad, but you know, I support all public schools. But as you bring high school students into the Frankfurt area, I just want to know, how is Baltimore City Public Schools? Have you guys increased any portion of your budget, I'll say, to fund additional trauma, behavioral health services for students, for faculty, for other staff, and also for school police?
Specifically with regard to the temporary relocation of high school students while the buildings are being constructed?
No, just noted, this is special interest of mine. Obviously, we have two schools within that swing space at this time. We have an elementary school, we have a middle school. So within that area, we don't have any high school students, and we're talking about 1,300 at one time, and then it's going to be followed by another high school that has to come in. So I'm looking to know with just an uptick in just youth violence and just public safety overall, has the school system increased their budget for behavioral health services for students and staff?
I do know that we have seen a considerable increase in behavioral health spending. I know from memory, not from any notes I have here, but it has gone up year on year fairly significantly. I can get you those numbers, but the short answer is we have increased behavioral health spending, both in terms of personnel and in a large contract where a variety of Baltimore-based providers came and bid, there was a competitive process, or a very proper competitive process, and the end result of that was a contract that schools can draw from that has Kennedy Krieger, Johns Hopkins, and others, resources there available specifically for, and as a matter of fact, I think the acronym is Extended School Behavioral Health, so it has been absolutely a priority. I think when I send the actual numbers, it will bear out what I'm saying. And I should have said, or when I talked about the swing space, that is kind of a dry number that's in a budget amount, but it's a significant number specifically knowing that having high school students go to a different building for three years, so it, a lot of those funds, I think it was $11.5 million, were aimed at making the experience there as smooth and good as possible. So as you know, that's not a small amount of money to put aside, and that coupled with the kind of, I don't want to say unrelated, but yeah, unrelated increases in spending for behavioral health, I think do show that we share your concerns.
And Chief, Mr. Chair, I would just ask that, as a committee request, can you just provide more information about what you guys are currently spending regarding behavioral health?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Stokes, and then Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. My question, and Councilwoman McCray, that was a good question, but my question is, how many schools are we employing at behavioral health at the schools? Not be more reactive if something happened at the school? Are we employed those kind of services in every school in the city? Because I know, I don't want to cut you, but a lot of times, when an incident happened at the school, we employ those services, but are we having those services implemented in every school in the city? And if they are, can we get a list of those schools, the ones that already have those services and the ones that don't? Because my only question is, we don't need to be reactive to those kind of services? They should be already employed in those schools already.
The first part is, we'll definitely provide a list of those schools. Secondly, I will say, and I know that there's sometimes unclear lines between what one person does at a school and what another one does, but in recent years, there's been, we have invested heavily in community schools and having social workers at every single school, and for bigger schools, sometimes two or more. Now, a social worker, not meant to say that a social worker at a school checks the box and it's completely fine, but there has been significant increase in funding with intentionality about saying every school, no matter how small, no matter where it is, needs to have at least one social worker. And then, as the council knows, there's an increasing number of community schools, schools that really do embrace the idea of a school is the heart of a community and has wraparound services for kids and also for adults. And so I think when we follow up with those numbers, that's just a little bit of color behind it. And we do get, we've been using some of our increased state funding specifically aimed at what you're pointing out.
So my follow-up is, so do we have So my follow-up is, so do we have those programs at every school in the city?
I believe we have them at every.
I think so too, but Chief of Staff Allison Perkins Cohen may have more definitiveness.
Yeah. We have, all of our schools have some level of behavioral health services based on the needs of the students in the school. Is that, is it, do we have the full complement of the services we would like? Probably not. And that's an area where, as Kerwin funding continues to come in, that's an area where we're very aware that we need to continue to increase the amount of services we're providing. We've been increasing those services over the last years, even before Kerwin, we were prioritizing those supports to students. And so I think that it's much better than it has been, but I do think it's supports that we could continue to focus on, especially these days. I feel like they're coming out of the pandemic, and then there's a lot of, we've had unfortunately a lot of violence in our schools that we need to make sure that we're really supporting our students and staff as they're responding to those incidents.
So, Mr. Chair, can it be a request that we get a list of those schools that have the services and what type of service they have? Because you say it varies.
Yeah.
And if we, during the current funding, that mean those other schools need additional services? Like other schools already have a full service? Maybe we can add that additional money for those schools also to have all the service that they need?
Yes.
In those schools also.
Yeah, I just will make one more point, which is that most of these services are funded out of special ed funding, and special ed funding is one piece of Kerwin that is not ramping up as quickly as it could. And so you'll actually probably see a communication later today about a challenge that creates where we're not receiving the amount of money for special ed that we actually need. So we are receiving about, I think, 80 million, and we spend closer to, no, I'm sorry, I think we receive about 100 million, we receive, spend closer to 300 million. So there's a big gap there, and so that's a challenge, and we have to use general fund dollars. All students together have to use general fund dollars to support the resources to make sure we're providing the services our young people need.
Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just kind of, I guess, to piggyback on what both of my colleagues had discussed, could you just kind of share, or Alice can probably answer this as well. We know that throughout the country, COVID really has affected student performance all Could you just share with us, what are some things that you have been doing to, or have in place to really help our students perform, pick up, and really start performing on their academic performance and for success? I know that, you know, I'm hoping you have tutors, some kind of tutoring set up, mentoring. If you could just give a little more detail of what you have in place so we can, so our students can get their scores in all of our academic subjects up to par. I know it's a trend that they're finding from statistics and research, that COVID really kind of hurt that performance, not just in Baltimore, but, you know, throughout our country. But we, you know, and all that's kind of related to the behavioral health things and safety. It's all kind of interconnected. So just a little more detail of?
Yeah.
The steps that you're taking.
Yes. So, Councilwoman, I appreciate you flagging, asking the question as well as flagging how related it is to all the other issues. So we do have a lot of supports we've put in place as part of our 3R plan, our Restore Recovery Plan, to help make sure we're addressing the impacts of the pandemic. So we have, one of the big supports you mentioned is tutoring. We have high dosage tutoring occurring for our students, so it's based on the research that, to really make an impact with tutoring, it needs to be high dosage, so it needs to be three or four times a week, it needs to be a certain number of hours. And so we are implementing that and seeing really good results from that. So we, particularly, one of our programs is a homegrown tutoring program that uses our own paraeducators to tutor students, and we've seen really, really encouraging results from that tutoring. We also have extended day programming at many of our schools where we extended the school day. We're doing a lot of small group instruction to make sure that individual students are getting the support they need. And we're also thinking about, we have more robust summer programming to, again, catch students up in the summer. So we're really trying to get at this in many ways to provide the additional supports to students. We're seeing the benefits of that. So in the, when our state data came out on the MCAP for literacy, we increased at a rate that was, in most grades, the same as or higher than the state. That's saying a lot, you know, coming out of the pandemic, because students were, high poverty students were disproportionately, we all knew would be disproportionately, and the research has shown have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. So to be outperforming the state is quite an accomplishment, and so I think it's evidence of the investment we made in literacy. Math, we declined in math, and we have declined like in, I mean, it's not a great talking point, but our declines were significant. They were not nearly as significant as the rest of the state. So we were able to stave off the much larger double-digit declines that the state saw in most grades, but we still declined. And so we, and that's, Maryland has a lot of work to do in math, the country has a lot to do, and work to do in math, and the world has a lot to do. All, the whole world has seen decreases in math, and we are no exception to that. So we are really thinking through what the supports that we're putting in place to move math. So we have a funding from the Gates Foundation that we're using to do additional supports to math that are similar to what we've done in literacy, and really trying to drill down on math, because it is absolutely an area of weakness that we in many jurisdictions need to support. But we also, so we saw those MCAP results that were positive, we saw some positive results in literacy and the NAEP scores in some grades. And then our kindergarten readiness results came out recently, which, again, these are pre-K students who were, you know, the, they were young learners during the pandemic, but we're seeing our kindergarten readiness, again, outperforming the state in terms of the level of readiness of our, the growth of our kindergarten readiness. And some, in some categories, are, we've closed the gap with the state for, I think it's for English learners and for our economically disadvantaged, we're starting to close the gap with the state. So that's, those are encouraging. So there's some things moving in the right direction, and we still know we have a lot of work to do.
How are the teacher shortages connected to that? Because we definitely need, are you, you have a plan to try to get our teachers in place?
Yeah. So that's, again, a challenge that is not unique to us. It is a national, it's a national problem. We were very fortunate this year in that we were quite successful in handling it. This year was, though unfortunately, a year when, for the first time, we had additional Kerwin funds. And so we, in a typical year, we have like 600 vacancies that are kind of just, you know, turnover for whatever reason. We have about 600 vacancies in a given year. This year, we had 1,300 vacancies because there was, you know, all those additional positions created in Kerwin, which are for programming our students should have had for years, for art programming, for librarians, for counselors, for world languages, for more AP offerings. Those were all programming that all of our students need and should have had for years. But in this year, to go from 600 vacancies to 1,300 vacancies, when this is the worst year that anybody's seen in terms of teacher recruitment, most teacher hiring is local, that's true nationally, that students come from their local, the local universities. Maryland colleges have decreased by, I believe it's 41% from like 2010 to 2018 in terms of the number of students that are coming out of teacher programs. So that makes it pretty hard. And then, for the first time this year, we saw significant decreases in our pipeline programs. We have to rely heavily on Teach for America. I mean, they're good partners, Teach for America, Urban Teachers, BCTR, they provide a lot of teachers to us that we rely heavily on to fill our vacancies. And this year, they saw precipitous decreases in the number of students they hired. Despite all that, we hired more teachers this year than we ever have in prior years. So we usually start the year with some vacancies when we start with 600 vacancies. This year, we were able to hire 700 teachers, which is, again, more than we ever have. It still was not enough. And so this year, we're continuing, we have a new, we had a, you know, shift in our chief human capital officer. Our other officer was great, went to Houston, but so we have a new woman, Emily Nielsen, who's really good and thinking a lot about how to do this. So we're looking at everything. We're looking at J1 visa program, we're looking at student-teacher options, we're looking at bringing back the H1B program, as well as really expanding our recruitment efforts and starting earlier. That was part of what made us successful last year, is that we started a lot earlier. And so we really pushed principals last year, and they heard the call and hired, we got the people in the pool early, and teachers, and then principals selected them early. So we're going to do that again and make sure we get going early. And, you know, in the end, we need to fill these positions, because these are positions that, again, all of our young people should have had for many, many years.
Thank you. Good, great information. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Councilman Stokes?
Real quick, some of our schools have daycares, and I know it's been very hard for them to recruit some of the parents with their daycare, because we, you know, that's important, daycare for our young people. So what are we doing in terms of more, having more of our parents enroll their kids in some of the schools of daycare? Because some of the schools I go to, I mean, absolutely, they have maybe two, some don't have any. And that's important. Are we kind of putting a lot of emphasis more on that? Making sure that our, those parents participate in the daycares, the daycare that's in some of our, or most of our schools?
So for the, if you're talking about daycare for the youngest?
Right.
Like babies and so on, there are, we do have permits in some of our buildings to allow daycare in our buildings. And, but we don't really run those programs. We do try to make space for them, because we know they serve the community, but we don't pay for or run those programs. Kerwin does expand, you know, we will have more offerings for four-year-olds and then three-year-olds. And so one of the challenges that everybody's facing is how to accommodate the space for the three-year-olds. And so that's something we're continuing to work on. But there is a call for expansion of more spots in schools for three and four-year-olds. I mean, just regards to space, which is not exactly what you asked, but one thing that Kerwin has really revealed that we hadn't really anticipated, was that, you know, we, our buildings, you know, we've closed a number of schools over years, because our buildings were built, most of them in the 70s or earlier, when the population of Baltimore was much larger. So we have needed to shrink the size of our portfolio. We don't, you know, we're drastically underfunded in terms of our capital investments, and so we are probably 80% to 90% below what industry standards say we should have to maintain our buildings. So we've been trying to do our stewardship part to actually get the portfolio somewhat smaller. It will not address that mountain of a problem I just mentioned, but we have been trying to. And in doing so, when we close schools, the way that we look at our utilization rate, which is the way we're evaluated, is based on the state rate of capacity that the state establishes based on what a building can hold. Those estimates are based on the programming you have. The programming we have has not been the programming we should have, because we've not had the resources to provide the art, the music, the dance, the world languages that we should have. And so one thing we're experiencing, which will impact daycares, to get back to your daycare question, is that we filled up some of our spaces with programs like daycare. But now, some of our fuller schools are realizing that they don't really have the room, they have the budget to buy the teacher, the art teacher, the music teacher, the world language teacher, but they may not have the classroom to put them in. And so that's just putting on your radar screen as just a challenge that we're increasingly realizing is a problem in our schools.
And my last question, real quick. I know we have a lot of old schools. Are we looking at those schools that are in existence, looking at the status of their, I guess, because a lot of schools are closed because they're old, they had some structural problems? Are we looking at all the schools that, so we can make sure we do have a list of those schools that might need some funding because of some construction?
Yes. So, you know, the investment, investments we've made with 21st Century, we look at a confluence of factors when we review in our annual review process for our schools. We look at indicators of, you know, childbirth in the area, people moving into the area, housing changes happening in the area. We look at the programmatic offerings in the school, whether it's worthy of our young people. We look at the condition of the building, but that's only one of many factors. But in the investments that we have made, the larger investments we've made, like the 21st Century Buildings Program, those, that program was almost entirely focused on neighborhoods where the population has particularly declined. Those are neighborhoods that had been historically disinvested, most of them are redline neighborhoods. They're neighborhoods where we saw the populations decline for, because of that lack of investment. And so in those neighborhoods, we had maybe two or three schools in the area that were all too small, and so because of their size, they couldn't offering the programming that young people deserve. And so we combined schools, we would close a school and combine them. And so almost all the 21st Century buildings that are being built are schools that are absorbing students from a closing school, because we reasoned that those students should have first dibs on a new building. We're out of 21st Century money, but then when we do, when we are doing school, when we're combining schools now, like in Sandtown, when we combined the schools there, we work with partners, like through Heart of America, through partnership, that one was with Under Armour, sometimes Kaboom, Kaboom helped in there too, to bring in other resources to make the receiving building better for young people. So we really do try to prioritize to invest in the schools that have been neglected, and try to make investments there as much as we can. But it is, you know, our resources are, we're touching the tip of the iceberg every year in terms of the problems that our buildings have. You know, we're touching HVACs, roofs and boilers, roofs and windows, that's it. We never get to other parts of our buildings, and even that is tip of the iceberg, it's never like the, really the deep dive that those systems need.
Thank you.
Colleagues? Council Vice President Middleton?
Just one last thing connected to my colleague, Mr. Stokes, when you were talking about childcare. And I know that the city school system also looks for partnerships and so on. So the Park Heights Renaissance has been having a hippie program for a very long, very successful and supported, and it stays successful because of the Family League. And I know you have a partnership with them. And early on, when that program started, Tina Hubbard was very supportive in her other role. Just kind of throwing that out there, that you should have a conversation with Tina about, more about that program and how it's really reaching parents with, you know, small children that just, that are getting ready to put their children in daycare, but they don't, a lot of parents don't know how to teach and prepare and be a part of that structure in bringing, educating their, putting them in, their children in a path for education. And I've just seen so much success with that parent-child relationship and how a parent teaches their child and prepares them for education. Lots of graduates, and it's the parent-child together that graduate from that program. Just a very successful program. They have been in Park Heights for a while now, and I've just seen so much success. Please talk to Tina about that program, and with you already having that connection with the Family League, I can just, they are, they have been the ones to help to maintain that success.
Okay, that's great, and I will follow up with her, and we do try to, the Family League has been a very good partner in terms of trying to coordinate, we try to coordinate our resources to make sure we're leveraging each other's investment, so, but I will definitely follow up with them on that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues? All right, we are now in recess. Thank you all.